Your mic, please.
Do it one more time, I think we're on mute.
Oh. Katie, if you could, just please speak into your mic so we can make sure we can hear you.
Yep, I'm here.
Fantastic.
Okay, Dash, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, of course. Kathy Conroy?
Here.
Jack McCann? Absent. Mark Palazzi? Absent. John Normile? Katie McLaren?
Here.
Katie McLaren?
Here.
Attending on Zoom. Katie, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, three members present.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Since we have, um... Okay, Lily, can you hear us?
I can.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you not hear me?
Is your switch on on your mic? Oh, it's on.
Okay. No, we can hear you fine.
Okay.
We just want to confirm because we only have, uh, three members present. And so the applicants need to know... The, uh, including you, Katie, John, and I are here at the moment. So the applicants need to know that you need a unanimous vote of the board in order to have your, um, application pass. That being said, oh, first of all, we want to, um, adapt the meeting minutes from...
Are you still there? Because I, I think we lost you.
All right.
Katie, can you hear us?
I can now. I lost it for a few minutes.
Yeah, right. The internet went out or something.
Yeah, okay.
What's your vote on adoption of the minutes from the October 6th meeting?
Oh, I vote to approve.
Okay, great. So we have three, so we're good to go. That was easy. Now we're going out of the old business. PLZBA 2021-0038, 848 Fourth Avenue. Two-family residential, a use variance for commercial property and a secret determination unlisted. The applicant Kevin Vandenberg is proposing to use this property as a professional office and a wood shop. We will just make the, um, statement that... Did it go out again? Okay. Make the statement, um, that this proposal was heard last month. Mr. Vandenberg had to come back with the, um, proof that he's acting as the agent. All those materials were received on October 20th in the planning department. So there's no need for further discussion. We just need to make the secret determination. Katie, can you do that?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move that in PLZBA 2021, uh, 0038, that the staff find this proposal to be an unlisted action, um, with sufficient information of all, uh... Sufficient information available upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Okay, we have a second? All right. Or in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Okay, we have the secret determination and now we need to make a motion on the application.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Things done, everything that was, uh, that you just read into the record, based upon the discussion that we had at the last meeting. The fact that now the record is complete. The property, it was shown, can't realize a reasonable return. The hardship is unique and, um, it's not going to alter, uh, by granting the variance, it's not going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood and the alleged hardship was not self-created.
Okay, thank you. And do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Okay. And on the motion, Mr. Normile?
I'll vote yes to approve.
Katie McLaren?
Yes.
And Kathy Conroy, I vote yes to approve. So good luck, Mr. Vandenberg. Commendable, um, description of the project up there on Fourth Avenue. We're very happy, Lansonburg, that you did it.
Thank you for your question.
Thank you. Okay, under new business, uh, now, um, whoever, uh, is doing the Carlisle Avenue, are you here for the Carlisle Avenue property? Anybody?
The applicant for Carlisle Avenue is attending via Zoom. He'll be, uh, putting on his audio momentarily.
And that would be?
Uh, Freddie Metzger, are you... Asked to un...
Where's Freddie Metzger?
There we go. Are we in?
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, now you want to make a...
No, sorry.
Um, this is my question to you. Are you, uh, willing to go ahead with, in need of three approvals?
I thought it was only one. Oh, needing three approvals, yes, for the unanimous vote. Yes, please.
Let's get your project through. Are you willing to give it a shot or you want to wait until the fourth person shows up? I want you to say it was a bad roll of the dice, you know what I mean?
Yes, I've had a few of these before. I understand how they work, but, uh, I'm hoping that with the, the variance being as small as it is for what we're looking for, that it shouldn't be an issue, hoping anyway. So I'd like to proceed this evening.
Okay, great. All right. PLZBA 2021-0053, Carlisle Avenue, R1, single-family residential detached. You need an area variance for the maximum unit density deficiency of .6 units per acre. The applicant Frederick Metzger is proposing the subdivision of one existing vacant lot into two lots so that a single-family home can be built upon each lot in the near future. Okay, Mr. Metzger, now you can tell us what you want to do.
Correct. Uh, as I mentioned before there, it's a, it's a single lot. When the client purchased it, it was actually shortly prior to him purchasing it, it was two, um, individual lots. And then when he purchased it, some short time prior to that, they merged it into one. So I, so for starters, he thought he was going to purchase two lots. Um, and then we'd probably just go forth and with a lot line adjustment to kind of rearrange it to make the lots a little more usable. So instead of having narrow, long lots, we get more of a square figure out of them that we can work better with a, a traditional home layout. Um, but basically what we have is a 16,500 square foot lot located on the west side of Carlisle Avenue. And Carlisle Avenue is a dead end, so the, the road ends kind of like right before our lots begin. So we would like to, again, uh, with the lots created and generated, um, more of in a square pattern, gives it more usable for a traditional lot layout with a, a small, single-family home. Um, the existing, there's existing sewer water and gas, uh, within, I think it's about 100, 150 feet away. And we got the approvals for the extensions on those to service these two homes. Uh, and again, meet, meeting all the requirements within the R1 zone for single-family residential, with the exception of the, the density, uh, per unit there. And again, um, you know, six point, the density, the, the density would be 6.1 units per acre and the maximum's 5.5. Again, missing by the 0.6, which is just, you know, it's an 11% deficiency. Again, hoping that the, the board sees this or views this in the same, similar manner and allows us to proceed with, uh, the subdivision of the lot into two. So we can, um, again, put, uh, two single fam, smaller, single-family homes on these lots.
Okay, does anybody from the board have any questions, John or Katie, for Mr. Metzger?
I do not. Seems pretty straightforward.
Yep, I would say. John?
No, I don't have any questions.
Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? So basically what you did was you bought one lot. Mr. Kurti bought the lot, correct?
Yes.
Whatever, and, and what is your affiliation with this? Are you the one who's going to build it or you?
Uh, no, he's, he's the owner. I'm the land surveyor.
You're the who?
I'm the land surveyor.
Yeah. Oh, okay. So you're speaking for him, that, didn't we have this issue last month?
Yeah, uh, yes, I, I filled out the paperwork. He signed and we submitted all the paperwork to allow me to do, uh, the paperwork and the presentation for him.
Yes, okay, so he bought the lot. And you just want to make it into two, so let's not spend too much time on this if no one is interested in making an observation on it. Do we need a secret?
We do not need a secret on this one. It's a, um, a type-two action.
Right, so it says. Um, okay, do we have a motion? For the area variance, John?
I, I would like to make a motion to approve, excuse me, approve the variance in that, um, the division into two lots is going to allow construction of two single-family homes that are going to fit into the neighborhood, which at this point are other, single-family homes. Uh, the benefit can't be achieved by any other feasible means. Can't put the, the two homes onto one lot. Uh, an undesirable change will not be made in the neighborhood. The request is not substantial. There will be no adverse physical effects or environmental effects on the neighborhood. And it is not self-created. It was, it was merged from two into one before the, the current property owner purchased it. So for those reasons and for everything that the applicant added into the record tonight, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Do we have a... Okay. Katie, seconded on the motion. Katie McLaren?
Uh, yes, yes, to approve.
Kathy Conroy, yes to approve. John Normile?
I vote yes to approve.
Okay, way to go. Good choice to stay with us.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
What, 6:15, 6:10?
Thank you.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you. Take care. Bye-bye.
Okay. Next case, PLZBA 2021-0054. Is this applicant present? Mr. Brickley? Do you want to give it a shot or... What the heck, huh? We're blowing that along.
The other option would be that he could defer till next month.
I would say that's the other option to defer. If you want, if you thought you weren't going to get it in three votes. Do we seem like pleasant enough people or?
Yeah, and you, you also have the ability to suggest that they may want to defer.
You might want to, you might want to...
Right.
Think about...
Right. You can always have that ability to suggest that.
Okay, I have a funny story, a little funny story to tell you, but I'll wait. All right, no, I'll just say this. Well, okay. PLZBA 2021-0054, 245 Fifth Avenue, two-family residential. You need a use variance for a multifamily, an area variance for parking deficiency of three spaces, and a secret, oh, well, you don't care about that, secret determination. The applicant Charles Brickley is proposing to renovate this two-family building into a three-family. The property does not have off-street parking. I'll just give you this funny little story. I, for some reason, saw 247 on this paper. And I thought if the guy who just bought 247 wants to make that into a three-family, I'm not, I'm not going to go along with that. But then I reread it, realized it was 245, and I said, well, that's a whole different story. That one I can see. So go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so I bought the building earlier this year. I'm looking to renovate it. The, um, the first floor of it is, uh, a pretty big, big space that's pretty much already split into two apartments. And, um, it just wouldn't really make much physical or economic sense to combine it back into one. Um, and then, um, the ups, the second floor is the third apartment. Um, and then the parking, there's plenty, it's right on the corner of Fifth Ave and one on Fifth Street. Um, so there's plenty of parking in front and on the side of the building. So I don't see that, um, making much of an impact on the, on the neighborhood either.
So now is there, um, that used to be a, um, a liquor store a long time ago. Maybe you didn't know that.
I probably didn't.
In the front, on the right.
Yeah.
And then the family did whatever the, the business, they lived there for, they lived there for a long, long time. And I know it was two apartments on the... But because it was all family who lived in there.
Yeah.
I think that's probably why it was expanded into maybe one, when in fact it should have been, I think there's two doors.
Yeah, there are two doors.
So, um, I can see where you would think that it would be a three-family.
Yep.
But it was sold to you as a two-family? Was that the idea?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's a zone as a two-family.
It was owned as a two-family, but anyone who was three different... Well, first of all, I don't think there was anybody in there for a while, but there wasn't...
Yeah, no, it's been vacant. It's still vacant.
Chair, the current, the current use according to the tax rules is two-family.
Yeah.
But I understand that, but it's two-family, but because it was, um, of family, an extended family type arrangement, there were three different apartments in there, which would probably never... I don't know. I don't want to say approved like that. It was like that for 100 years or something. I mean, you know? So I can see where you would have thought it was a three-family. You know, I'm trying to help you out here. You know, I mean, saying, I can see where, um, you would have bought it thinking that, you know, you could make it into a three-family without too much of a problem.
Yep.
But that's why you, obviously you need a variance because you bought it as a two-family.
Right.
Yeah. So now, do you have a lot of renovations you have to do to make it?
Yeah, a good amount.
Viable?
Yep.
Is there like a kitchen in each, or bathrooms or whatever? You know what I mean? Like, it kind of look like a...
Yep, and I actually have, uh, PE plans that I sent to, uh, Dash and everything.
Oh, I saw that, uh, here somewhere, that you were to, uh... Yes, the architectural drawings were going to be, um, re-studied.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, so there's, yeah, there's an existing, um, kitchen and one and a half baths in the first floor left, um, in the first floor right, which is what I assumed was the liquor store at one point. There was, we, I have a plan for, there was a half bath, but there's room for a, um, a stand-up shower in there that I'm going to put in. And then, um, basically make it into a studio apartment and have in the kitchen, um, have it be kind of an open concept apartment. And then the upstairs already has kitchen and bathroom.
And that's just like a normal apartment up there?
Yep.
Your apartment?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Does anybody from the board, John or Katie, have any questions for the applicant? Is any, is anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? Okay, I will say, um, as I said, for my, personally for myself, I'm not big on taking two-family apart buildings and making them, you know, jamming.
Three apartments in there, right.
In this particular, uh, building, which I know was for sale for quite a while, I can see where you would think that three apartments would be the logical use. It's kind of a wrong type thing.
Yeah, and, and my thinking is, you know, if I, if I make that into one big giant apartment on the bottom...
Right, and it looks stupid.
Well, yeah, that, and I'll have to, in order to make it economically viable, I'd have to charge a lot of rent and it would just make two more affordable apartments if it's two instead of one big one.
Right. I just, I think it, myself, I think it's a good, uh, use for the building, but, um, I don't know.
I just, um, I just wanted to ask, if I could, that have, have the plans been reviewed by, because the plans that we got are not very well, um, labeled. They're not very precise, and is that because they're not finalized yet?
Yeah. Uh, are those the PE plans that, that she's talking about that I gave you?
Yes, so, um, I think this is also related to a staff comment that I, I left, um, staff report. And I just think the drawings themselves need further review by the code enforcement department. It, it won't, it's not something that's, um, at, at our jurisdiction. But, um, there are some inconsistencies and errors that, that the code enforcement will, will handle. That's, that's the only thing. It doesn't relate to the variance, uh, this evening.
And I will say, um, those were drawn up by, uh, professional engineer, uh, Robert Mann. And the, um, code enforcement did request a few revisions, um, that were, I don't know if, so I don't know if all the revisions came through to you as well.
I don't believe...
Okay, all right.
Well, that's, that's just good to know. I'm just used to, I'm not an architect, not even close. So what we're used to seeing has a lot more detail on it. So I think that's what, um, probably what the note was related to, that it, um, you know, but as long as code enforcement has, um, you know, requested what they need, then that's, that's fine by me. Are we ready for a secret?
Um, I don't know. John, you have anything you want to add?
No.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Katie.
Okay, Madam Chair, for, um, ZBA 2021-0054, I'd ask that the board find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
On the motion, or in favor, say aye.
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 Carried. Okay, and on the, um, application itself, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would move, uh, to...
Hang on a second, Katie. Andy has something to say.
Okay.
Right. Two resolutions, one for the area variance for the parking and one for the use variance for the use.
Okay.
Go ahead, Katie.
Um, Madam Chair, I would move to approve the use variance. I think, uh, the applicant has explained why, uh, it cannot real, yield a reasonable economic return, um, if only used as a two-family. I don't think it's going to essential or alter the essential character of the neighborhood. It's kind of a unique circumstance because of the condition of the building as it was when he bought it. And I also believe that it's a good thing to be, uh, renovating and putting to good use a building that's been vacant. Um, so that is a positive motion for the use variance.
Okay, do we have a second on the use variance?
I'll second.
John seconds on the motion. Mr. Normile?
I vote yes to approve.
And Kathy Conroy, I vote yes to approve. Katie McLaren?
Yes, to approve.
Okay, and then on the area variance, Katie?
I would also make a motion to approve the area variance. Again, I do not think it's going to, um, produce an undesirable change in the neighborhood. I don't, it is not a substantial variance, especially given, um, the parking situation on that corner. And because there's no room on the property to, uh, create off-street parking, it was not a self-created, uh, difficulty. So that's a positive motion to approve the area variance.
And we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and on the motion, John?
I vote yes to approve.
Kathy, I vote yes to approve?
Yes, to approve.
Okay, so we have three approvals. Wow, we're people with the roll on the dice tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we have our fourth member present. Mark Palazzi is here, so... Taylor Apartments, you can lose one, you're okay, right? On the, um, PLZBA 2021-0056, the Taylor Apartments building, 1 through 125 River Street. It's an R5 high-rise residential area, medium to high-density. I'm not going to read the whole what the applicant wants to do, or we'll be nodding off by the end, but, uh, we are see, you are seeking an area variance for maximum unit density deficiency of 74.6 units per acre and a parking deficiency of 79 spaces. You need 157 spaces and you have 70 per post. And as far as the density is concerned, you can, I'll leave that up to you to explain. So, go ahead. Introduce yourself, please.
Sure thing. Uh, my name is Roger Keating. I'm from the Chazin Companies, uh, here tonight.
Speak up, please.
I'm sorry about that. Speaking to the microphone for you. Roger Keating from the Chazin Companies here tonight on behalf of Penrose and Detroit Housing Authority. Yes, uh, we were before this board previously for approvals for variances. We did get, um, last time out, the, um, setback variances, parking variance and, and density variances, um, previously. But the, um, project has changed since, um, we were here the last go-around. So, um, as you indicated, the project is in the, the R5 district, so we are in that high, a high-rise residential district. And as, as the project was proposed previously, um, we had, um, a five-story building. We're proposing now a seven-story structure. Um, and indicated, um, we'll have 141 units, um, with some first-floor amenities. The existing site has, um, currently 143 apartments, um, with 34 parking spaces, um, located behind it. So the, the proposed plan, um, does, does propose, um, some additional parking. And, um, the existing Taylor 1 and 2 are nine-story buildings. Um, we're proposing a new seven-story building. The, the project, last time we were here, Andy can speak to this as well, is, um, we're, we're doing an update tonight, but there's, there's no action that can be taken this evening. We're here to update again to the board, like we did the previous time, to, um, get a, get a recommendation from this board to go back to planning. As the way the seeker process has been working with this project, um, we had to have it all live in the planning department's, um, purview. Correct, Andy?
Sure. Um, under seeker, this is a type-one action. Um, it's subject to coordinated review by all involved agencies. Um, when this was originally processed and approved, uh, back in March, the planning commission was the lead agency for seeker. And they, they eventually adopted the negative declaration. Now that this project has come back with revisions, um, it first appeared before the planning board at their last meeting. And, um, they, uh, didn't make a determination on how they were going to proceed with seeker. They basically have two options. They can determine to amend their previous negative declaration or they can rescind their negative declaration based upon the proposed changes. They didn't make that determination on how to proceed at their last meeting. Um, I'm sure they will, uh, in the future. But at this point, they are still considered the lead agency on this project because it's still the project that was approved with them as lead agents. So tonight, you wouldn't be able to take any official action on the variance requests because the planning committee agency acted on amending the seeker.
I know, I got a headache.
Sorry.
That's right. Unlisted, seeker is unlisted. The ZBA is to establish the lead agency and make the secret determination.
That, that staff comment was made before, uh, becoming aware of this, so.
That solves that problem.
Every day is different.
Absolutely. Okay, but that eliminates that confusion. So tell us again, what are, what are we expected to do or not do tonight, Andy?
Listen to the applicant, um, provide any suggestions or thoughts that, that you choose to. Decide on whether or not you want to make any comments back to the planning board as, as the seeker lead agency. Because it's going to bounce back to them, but you can't take any action until the lead agency acts.
So then, the, the, so then in the end, they got to go back to planning and then come back to us again next month?
That's correct.
And so then, if we hear them tonight, next month, we just have to vote?
If, if the planning board does the seeker, then yes.
Right.
Seekers, yes. Correct. And candidly, what the discussion at the planning commission was, um, a deliberation on their part on whether or not the increase in height and size of the building, um, justifies... the increase in height and size of the building, um, justifies, uh, uh, an amendment to the previous negative declaration to determine that there, there are still no, um, adverse environmental impacts or rescinding that and, and then analyzing the potential impact resulting from the height. Um, they didn't, they're going to do that.
We're not going to do that.
Correct.
So all we have to do is decide if, whether or not we would, uh, in, um, effect, give a variance because you're going from five-story to seven-story. But the ones you're tearing down are nine-story.
Correct.
There's no, there's no variance for height.
And we're not asking for a variance for height. But for the density, correct.
That would, uh, ensue from five-story versus seven. Come on, you gave us something, now you changed your mind.
Well, uh, uh, when, whenever Roger brings an application, I have to get this, so, um.
Didn't know you were right. Don't know you're right.
Sorry, uh, uh, now, uh, uh, by, by myself and Aaron, um, that, that Roger's frankly hearing for the first time is that, um, I don't believe that at a density variance required um, under the code, um, the debt, there are definitions that, um, there are multiple definitions that this project, multi-family high-rise. Um, it's been, it's being processed up until this point as a a more we might which has sixty units per acre. The high-rise has a hundred and twenty units per acre. Also, it's my understanding, in, in speaking with Aaron, that this, this property is four acres in size, so, so the density variance is not required.
Okay, so, again, when is this, uh, well, your opinion is correct. I mean, he said that code enforcement?
Correct, ultimately.
Requirements for medium or high-rise, it's one space per unit.
Okay, so then, the only, we've already given the for the setback. And they haven't changed. Am I right or no?
That's correct.
Yeah, and since the density is up for question, then the only thing we really have to consider would be the parking.
Correct, because the parking deficiency will have increased because of
Regardless of whether or not it's, um, a density issue, right, okay.
Can I interrupt?
Sure, ab- absolutely. I was trying to get it straight. I don't mean to harp.
Um, we lost wifi?
Yes, we should say for the record.
Was suspended?
Uh, we just picked, uh, recording, we just picked back up again, I think.
It's back.
But for people participating remotely, do we have to re, or ask Kathy to recap what she just said? Did they miss that?
Look, the only thing that I said when it said recording stopped, the only
Katie's going to try to let us know. She heard everything or we cut out.
Where is she? Oh.
It was, it was very disordered.
Did you hear me say that we only had that, we did the density the last time around, so the only thing we have to deal with tonight, and we're not really dealing with it, but we're discussing it, is the parking.
We did the setbacks the last time.
That's what I meant. I meant the setbacks.
Right.
The density is up, enforcement, so the only thing we're talking about tonight is parking. Did you hear me say that before, before I cut out?
I, I did, but everything that Andy said was very garbled.
Oh. Great.
And that was because
So I know the folks were
Um, okay, so, so, uh, again, to summarize, um, we, we don't believe, uh, that the density variance is required because they also fit the definition of a, um, high-rise, which, um,
Medium.
That combined with the having four acres, uh, the density variance is likely not required. Ultimately, code enforcement needs to make that call. Um, but I think that's where that will come down. The, um, variance for the parking is required because of the, uh, change in the unit. So, so, so the parking is still required. The setbacks have already been granted and as long as the applicant confirms that setbacks aren't changing, then really the only variance in front of you, which you cannot act upon tonight, is parking.
For the parking, okay.
You hear that, Katie?
I did, yeah. I heard the whole thing.
Okay.
Correct.
So, so there are still, if I understand correctly, applicant confirms that nothing, the footprint of the building has not changed. So the setback has not changed.
That is correct.
And that we still, um, you're you still are proposing one more parking space than what was there in the, the building as it was used previously.
So as it was re, as it was proposed or as it exists today, there's thirty-four parking spaces and they're not all completely on that property. Some of them encroach into the alley. As part of the planned project, thirty-eight spaces will be created behind the building. Some of them are undercover and those will all be on the property. They'll no longer be in the alley. Um, so there's a net increase of four parking spaces on the property. But, um, the housing authority also has, under their control, that has the access to forty additional parking spaces, um, right at the Taylor three building with the walkway to it. So there's, they have a total of seventy-eight parking spaces.
Okay.
Okay, you good for now, Katie? Is that good?
I, um, yeah.
Okay, great. Mark or John, do you have any questions before we see who wants to, anybody here in the audience want to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? Okay, come on up.
My name is Sandra Rouse. I live at one fifty-nine First Street. I live in the neighborhood of the Taylor Apartments. Um, I do want to commend the, um, Troy Housing Authority for managing this project and to, uh, you know, an excellent level of quality over decades. Um, I also want to, um, uh, compliment Penrose because it was in two thousand nineteen that they presented the opportunity for us to learn about the project and this was held at the Sage Auditorium. And it was very informative and I felt people were very receptive to the residents of the neighborhood as well as those that in the Taylor Apartments regarding the project. Um, my main concern, and this I realize is not the, um, issue on the table, is the height of the building because at, at the time, we thought the five-story was fine. What I'm requesting is some way for Penrose, um, uh, to delay this a little bit and offer more time for the public to have some input. Could we possibly have another public forum to understand what this seven-story structure is going to look like in our neighborhood? And I understand this is the downtown area, but we are, you are on the border of three-story residential areas as well as Sage, uh, campus, which is another three-story profile. And that's my major concern, that there be some opportunity for public understanding and exchange of information.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Roust, Roust, sorry. Um, anybody else? Yes?
It looks as if someone in the chat is, is
Oh, okay, alright, when I get done with this lady will
Leaving a message in the chat and perhaps would like to
Oh, God, you know, chat.
I apologize, that was me.
That's right. It was, it was Dash, not paying attention.
I was updating Zoom attendees about the audio issues, but please proceed.
Okay, alright, nobody's, nobody wants to chat. That's a bad dish. You're young. You could be me. Go ahead, man.
My name is Sandy Dagler. I live at one twenty-eight First Street. And I'll echo what Sandra Rouse just said. I agree with, with everything she said. Um, I'm also concerned about the height because it is out of scale with the neighborhood to the south of the bridge. Um, I'm concerned about the density mostly, not so much this first project, which doesn't seem to be significantly increasing the density of what's there, but with future projects that are going to follow. And I'm concerned about setting a precedent for further development south of the bridge that taller, denser buildings are acceptable. So I just want to state that and have that be considered. Um, and I'm not opposed to the project in general. I think, you know, as Sandra said, it's, the design is great, the, the use is fine. It's just the height and the density.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Dagler. Anybody else want to speak in opposition? Okay, would the applicant like to address the, although the yarn issues for us, but perhaps we're only dealing with the parking, but certainly can sympathize with, oh, you know what? Hang on, before you do that, is anybody in the, um, uh, remotely wanted to speak in opposition? No, okay.
Can I just mention that there was, there is someone in the chat who wanted to support, um, Sandra Rouse's statement?
There was me. I don't know if I'm allowed.
Now you come up, okay.
I live at sixty-four Washington Street, basically. Um, and I have the very same concerns about, uh, mostly the density, which is more than double, uh, what was supposed to be allowed and what was first proposed, and also about, um, the parking. I'm, I'm delighted that something's happening over there, but, um, I think that, uh, those two things are something that, um, needs to be addressed and, if it isn't done right, it, we're going to be living with it for a long time. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, thank you, Claire. Thanks, Katie, for letting us know that she was there. And, um, okay, now if you'd like to address
Sure.
The concerns about
So I have on the Zoom call Dylan, uh, is, is, uh, you're on the call, correct? Yep, there he is, okay. Dylan, uh, would you like to, um, address anything as it relates to the comments heard, um, herein?
Yeah, I, I really value the feedback. Uh, this is Dylan Salmons from Penrose Regional Health President. Uh, I really value the feedback in the public here and that there was a value to the community engagement that was done, uh, earlier in the project design. We haven't had a chance to catch up with yet where we are now in the, the seven-story building, but we are committed to coming back and holding another public engagement, um, to hear about the concerns, think about how we can address them, you know, in design of the building as it moves forward, how we can think about it in the context of the bigger Taylor, uh, revitalization master plan. Um, and just to make sure that, that continues on. It's an important part of our process, uh, and it's an important part of being your neighbor eventually. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, ladies, I think you've been heard. You're going to have a meeting and that's good.
Thank you. So, um,
So you're all set?
We're, we're all set, um, with respect to, um, this evening is, I guess the only thing that we would ask is, we have the parking before you then, uh, you know, and is there, um, the last time we did this with the, with this board, um, you guys had made a, um, recommendation or, uh, comment back to planning, um, as it relates to, you know, if, um, you were in favor of, of such a, um, a variance. Um, so I guess for, for, for us, um, if we know we're going down that path, when we go back to planning, it will be good to know for, for
You got us behind you. We got your back, so to speak.
The next meeting.
Right.
Because procedurally, then what, you know, last time is you voted at the, at the second meeting.
We wrote at the second meeting and, and, um, yeah, so that, when do they meet again, the planning group?
November seventeenth.
Seventeenth, okay. So, do we have anything, Mark or John or Katie, do you have anything you want to add in terms of the parking or, uh, do we, can we just make a?
I, I, I mean, I feel comfortable saying that I would support it, um, the way it's proposed right now.
And I, I feel the same way. That's probably the easiest way to do it, just to say that, I don't know, do you two feel possible, saying you would support it? Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically you have our support and, uh, I don't think that there's anything we need to specifically, well, as you just said, the parameters would stay the same. We would maybe make that known to the, um, planning department, but I think that's probably a given anyway. Or with, everybody would have to come back, you know what I mean? It would, so, you couldn't change anything other than the parking. So do we have anything else?
So I just would say then procedurally, then moving forward, um, we'll, we'll confirm with the, um, code department as it relates to the, uh, recent findings of, uh, the density. Um, because then that could come off of this, this request for variance. And then, um, when we come back before you, we would just simply have an amended application with just the, um, the parking, uh, for the record.
And hopefully you could meet with the neighbors or have another public meeting to discuss the density part of it. Whether, as, uh, Mr., Mr., uh, Penrose, hey, I know this is not his name, Penrose. John from Penrose.
I, I apologize. I always seem to throw you curveballs when it comes to seeker, so I do apologize. You're, you're doing, you're doing just fine. Andy, um, I appreciate all your input as always. Thank you, sir.
Okay, great. So we'll see you probably next month. Okay.
I think you can just make a motion to adjourn and
We're not going to table?
This is table till next month without
Okay.
I know.
Okay.
We don't have to vote to table. Okay, all in favor? Uh, opposed, carried, or adjourned? Thank you.